Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Grand Rapids Public Schools Regular Board Meeting. Today is February 21, 2022. And I will appreciate your presence at this meeting of the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education. We respectfully request that you turn off your cellular phones and refrain from clapping, okay? Cheering or making audible comments. We invite you to make formal public comments during the designated times on either agenda items or non-agenda items, if you wish, or both. To do so, please fill out a comment card and submit it to the board table. Please limit your comments to the appropriate three minutes. Additionally, I'd like to go over the safety protocols. Based on the latest data and science and guidance from the Kent County Health Department, we have extended the GRPS PK through 12 mask mandate for all students, staff, and visitors, regardless of vaccination status. If you are in need of a mask, those are available at the entrances. We've gone over public comment cards. Individuals will be called up one at a time if you would like to make comments. And we've gone over the procedures for submitting the comment cards. On behalf of our superintendent, Dr. Lidran Robey, and the Board of Education, thank you for being in attendance with us. And we'll start for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the President of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Grant, if you will take the role.
Yes. Ms. Grant is present. Ms. Lewis?
Present.
Reverend Mathias?
Present.
Dr. Baker?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Dr. Flores?
Present.
Ms. Shaki is excused. President Ross is excused. And Vice President Williams?
Present.
And we need approval of our agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Support.
The role.
All right, Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki is excused. President Ross is excused. And Vice President Williams?
Yes. Next, we have celebrations.
So I'd like to invite Mr. Eric Carmsen and Ms. Roseanne Wall to talk about our partnership with the GR Public Library. They'll come forward. Welcome.
Don't want to hit one of the buttons on the computer. I know how it works in here. Good evening, Vice President Williams, Dr. Robey, and distinguished board members. It is my pleasure tonight to talk about and celebrate our One Book, One City for Kids program. The One Book, One City for Kids is an amazing reading program that provides 5th grade scholars of Grand Rapids with the same book to read. This fantastic opportunity is a result of the hard work of Roseanne Wall, our ELA curriculum supervisor, and her collaboration with the Grand Rapids Public Library. I would like to welcome Amy Cochran from the Grand Rapids Public Library and introduce Roseanne Wall, who will speak more about the program.
Good evening, Vice President Williams, Dr. Robey, board members. So I'm so excited today to speak to you about our One Book, One City event. I'm going to speak a little bit more about the GRPS One Book, One City event, but I would first like to introduce Amy Cochran. And it's through our partnership and a collaboration that we've been able to take a community-city event and actually turn it into also a Grand Rapids Public Schools event. And so I want to, you know, first introduce Amy Cochran. Let her speak a little bit about the community event and the One Book, One City and our partnership. And then I'd like to tell you a little bit more about what our 5th grade scholars are doing with them.
Thank you, Roseanne. I'm so happy to be here tonight. I am the Youth Services Manager at the Grand Rapids Public Library. And One Book, One City is the library's annual community author event for kids. And every year, we make a very big deal out of it. And for nine years, we're in our ninth year of a partnership with GRPS for this program. So we are very excited. We're coming up on our 10-year anniversary. And we, every year, not only do a public author event for the community, but we're also really thrilled to be able to offer bonus extras through our partnership with GRPS. So some of those extras are that all of the 5th graders in the system get a copy of the book to keep. And I believe you all have a copy of the book tonight to take a look at as well. And then also, the other major extra that we're able to provide every year is we make sure that all of the students are able to attend a session with the author. Now, previously to the last couple of crazy years, those visits were in-person. There'd be workshops and just all kinds of live in-person events. And the last couple of years, we have, of course, had to go virtual. So, but this year, that actually worked out really well because the author is from the U.K. So I don't think we would have been able to pick this book if they were in-person. So we host all of those sessions. We're doing that on Zoom this year. It takes a lot of coordination, as you might imagine, between GRPS, GRPL, and the author. I think this year, we have eight total sessions in one week. So that's a pretty big commitment for the author to make. So we have to find authors that are willing to do that piece of it. We choose new books every year in tandem with our GRPS colleagues. And generally, what we do is we come up with a short list of titles for the committee to consider, and we're looking for titles that fit into pre-planned curriculum for the coming year so that it can really slide easily into what teachers are already planning on doing. This year, we got the word that "science and space exploration" was the theme of the day. So we came up with a short list, and then the committee got together, and we chose this title out of all the possibilities. And so, the title, and there's a poster that all of the, all of the schools get. So here's a poster. I did bring posters. So if any of you all want a poster in addition to your bookmark, please let me know. I can also make them available later on. So we picked the "Jamie Drake Equation" by Christopher Edge because it is all about science. It's a great adventurous story. There's a lot of cool scientific theories smoothly worked into the story. So the basic premise is you have a young boy, Jamie. He is missing his father. His father is on the International Space Station orbiting the Earth. And Jamie gets this mysterious signal on his phone that he becomes convinced is an alien signal. And then, his father's mission, something goes really wrong, and Jamie tries to figure out how he can help and get his father back home while he's stuck on Earth. So it's a great story, and there's a lot of themes in it for the students to discuss in addition to a lot of the science and the space elements. And there's aliens, maybe, maybe. So we are going to have the author visits with Christopher Edge, who is the author at the end of March. And Roseanne will have to confirm this, but I do believe that you are all invited to the student sessions?
Right.
Okay, great.
You'll all receive an invite.
Great, great. And then also, anyone is welcome to come to the public event, which kind of ends the week, at the end of the week on Friday afternoon. We had to put it in the middle of the day because the author's in England, and he didn't want to stay up too late. So, so now, that's kind of our piece of it. We really value this partnership, and every year, we have worked to make it bigger and bigger. It started off much smaller, and now we're really hitting all the 5th graders. Now, turn it over to Roseanne.
Thank you. So kind of just to give us a little bit of background and perspective from the GRPS lens, as Amy shared, we're going into our ninth year. And originally, when the One Book, One City community event started, every single 5th grader received the book, and they got to take it home. And that was it. So we got together and said, well, how can we make this into a true partnership where our students not only read and enjoy the book, but are able to interact with it and, you know, talk to each other, culminating with the author visit? And so that's when the One Book, One City GRPS event started. And so what we do is we create a teacher guide as well that goes with, together with the GRPL guide that they put together. And what we do is we look at the English Language Arts curriculum, the time period that they're reading it, because we don't really want it to also feel like it's one more thing, right? It needs to seemingly fit in. We look at our literacy standards and the themes that are discussed. And then when the book is presented through our teacher guide, we kind of give extra projects that teachers can work on with our students. And so far, there has been, every year, there has been real excitement around this time. At the beginning, we were not able to get all our students to the author event because there were limited author sessions. And through our partnership and GRPL really working to get more author sessions into their contract, we were able to get every single 5th grader in. So now, every single 5th grader gets to meet the author at the end of the session or the time period that they read the book. So starting in January, every single 5th grader got the book. They are now in the middle of reading this book with their teachers. So far, the feedback that I've got is that the students love the book, they love discussing it. But then, we also wanted to take the discussion beyond the classroom wall. So we created a discussion board or a blog where all our 5th graders can discuss the book with each other across our district. So it's not public, but it's within our district, they can speak to each other. And so every week, there's a discussion question posted, and they comment with each other. And I know last year, we had over 5,000 posts from our students just discussing with each other, and there was this excitement. And so this year, we just started it, and we're on our way to getting the discussion posts, and our students engaging in that. And March 22nd, 23rd, 24th, and 25th, we're having our author sessions, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. And it's virtual again this year. But all our students and our teachers will be invited to sessions, and we will send out, once we get, work out the links with Grand Rapids Public Library, you will all get an invite to the links as well. So again, I wanted to say thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak about One Book, One City. And it has been a really wonderful partnership, and I know we're looking forward to many more.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
This evening, our scholar representatives are excused, and so we'll move on to public comment, including our union representative. All right, we do have. Okay. Mary Bowden.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to speak on behalf of a frustrated teacher. So, Vice President Williams, Superintendent Robey, and board members, here's what they had to say. I would like to speak about the USR funds. I understand there are limitations to what these funds can be spent on, as well as a time limit in which they have to be spent. I also acknowledge that there are not enough personnel applying for our open positions. However, despite being empathetic to those challenges, it is incredibly disheartening to hear GRPS administration and the board say they don't know what to spend it on when the needs are so clear to the people in our school every day. We need support for our struggling students. One of the best ways we can help these struggling students, as cited in Hattie's List of Factors Related to Student Achievement, is interventions. While the USR money could fund interventions for the next few years, after that, we would need to check our priorities as a district to make sure it happens. Response to intervention programs should be at the top of our list, given its effectiveness. It is heartbreaking to be a 5th grade teacher and have students who cannot read fluently. These are students who do not qualify for special education because in order to qualify for special ed, students need to have a strength in addition to their weaknesses. The students who do not have a strength are then offered no support. Therefore, all of the responsibility for getting them up to grade level falls on the classroom teacher, which is an impossible expectation. In many other districts, systematic interventions are taking place. Kids who struggle with reading and math are caught early on and offered small group assistance at their level by trained teachers. This is not the case in GRPS. If we do have an interventionist, they are not able to provide interventions weekly because it is not their primary job, and other jobs are thrust upon them. One way teachers are supposed to be able to get assistance for students is to bring them to the student success team meetings. Often, they feel like a waste of time because nothing happens to get them additional help. We are failing our kids by continuing to promote them to the next grade without ensuring we have provided the tools they need to be successful. We have the money necessary to correct this. Not only do we need to spend the money for actual intervention programs, we also need dedicated staff in each building whose only job is to provide these interventions instead of being pulled to sub or coordinate testing for most of the year. Each building should have multiple interventionists, at least one for math and one for reading, but more depending on how many students are in the school. Other jobs, such as test coordinator, need to be separate positions as they are so time-consuming. Only by having enough dedicated interventionists will we be able to support our struggling students and give them hope of being successful in the school and in the future. And in the document, there's a link to that research that she cited, Hattie's List of Factors That Relate to Student Achievement. So that's why I wanted to hand it out, so you would have that link. And I hope in the future that staff, this is from me, will be able to approach the district and Board of Ed and feel safe doing that and be able to come to you directly rather than me having to do this. So that's my, my hope for the future.
Thank you.
Zick? If you could come forward.
Vice President Williams, Superintendent Robey, and board members. My name is Maggie Zick. I have two kids at Southwest Elementary. I have a few concerns I'd like to discuss. First concern, I hated the way the strategic plan surveys were presented online. It was confusing. The verbiage was not in layman's terms, and it was only in one language until the last couple of days, when it was extended and put in several language options, but then not announced that other languages had been added. So what was the point? No one even knew that the deadline had been extended or that the language options became available. Second concern is the USR money. Why isn't this money being used for the actual needs of the schools? Is there a detailed list of things that the schools need that we can use the money for, that would be allowed? Has anyone even asked the schools what they need? Why couldn't more money be thrown at our Southwest playground so that we can get what we deserve and need as opposed to what we can afford? Or start working on our inadequate and unsafe preschool playground now instead of waiting for funds in the future? I realize, two weeks ago at this very board meeting, it was mentioned that a meeting involving 40-some teachers had a meeting to discuss the USR funds, but not one of the teachers from our school even knew about it. It's almost like our principal wasn't informed to send a teacher as representation. I don't understand why there was nobody from our school there to represent the needs and just comments from our school's point of view. I have a genuine fear of my youngest child, who is in first grade, never catching up at this point. COVID caused a massive problem for kids and educators everywhere, as all of you know. She missed being immersed and in-person, the first and arguably most crucial year of being in a bilingual program. I'm terrified she won't learn to read in the timeframe that she should. I'm tired of blaming myself, and I'm most certainly not blaming the teachers who are working in crisis mode with less than adequate resources. I don't understand why this isn't causing widespread panic amongst all of you and your colleagues in this room. Because I can tell you right now, the teachers are terrified, and so am I. The teachers cannot do everything for everyone. They cannot be the teacher and the interventionist. Why isn't this money being used to help support and attempt to fix this massive problem by supplying a curriculum that actually works and staff to intervene? Why does our school, in particular, lack a specific interventionist, especially now that we're really seeing what the pandemic has done to these kids and their academic abilities? I'm tired of hearing about all this money we have now and not knowing how to spend it. I've heard flat-out lies about who is being involved in the process to figure out how to spend it. And seeing that we're prioritizing swag and yard signs is embarrassing because at the end of the day, my daughter still can't read. Thank you.
And we are going to move on to reports. Secretary to report.
Okay, for Secretary's report, I have just a few meeting updates. The Ad-Hoc Facilities Committee is meeting on February 23rd at 4:30 p.m. in the auditorium here. And the Finance Committee is meeting on February 28th at 4:30 p.m., also in the auditorium.
Maggie, and Committee Chair update for the Legislative Committee.
All right, yes. So in, we had our legislative meeting today. In our meeting, we had an overview of the Legislative Luncheon, which we all spoke about at the last board meeting, just how we will be debriefing with students, and also how we'll follow up with legislators to thank them for their time. We also talked about our Capitol Day meeting that we do every year, how we can incorporate students in that event this year, just trying to find ways to further advance the student voice and seeing how well it went with the Legislative Luncheon. Yes, also, they do it better than, than we do. And we had just an update on the governor's budget and what it means for education specifically. I don't know, John, if we want to give further details about that, or if anyone on the Legislative Committee would like to just give some input on that update.
Of course, I'm going off the top of my head here, so. Vice President Williams, Dr. Robey, members of the board. So we are fortunate that the state school aid fund is at a historic high with a surplus that's in the billions of dollars. The governor's executive budget, I want to emphasize, this is the first part in a process. So the governor, annually, usually the worst first week in February, introduces his or her executive budget. Governor Whitmer rolled out a historic investment in both per pupil funding. So we'd be looking at if her budget was around $435 per pupil. You're also seeing almost $800 million in funding for categoricals to target at-risk special education, English language learners. It will, it's not as aligned with the Michigan School Finance Research Collaborative as we would like, but is a huge step in the right direction, notably, and that $1.5 billion is in educator, and that's, that's across the board, not just teachers. Any educational staff, including support staff, would see retention bonuses because the intent is to stop the hemorrhage. We're struggling with a, not just statewide, but nationwide historic staffing crisis, not just teachers and school leaders, food service workers, maintenance, custodial. In fact, our largest vacancy is in that custodial and food service right now, second only to the, to the teachers, because of course, our teachers make up more than 50% of our overall employment. It also includes investment in recruitment, so everything from stipends for student teachers, scholarships, to encourage individuals to enroll in colleges of education. As you may recall, and I can't remember if I was up here or just the legislative, Michigan is dead last in the number of students completing their colleges of education. We've seen a 71% decline since 2006. 71% decline in students completing colleges of education in the state of Michigan. And so, as we've talked about, she also looked at other areas around mental, social, emotional, mental health investments. And so you'll see more of this coming forward. I will be forwarding the link of the presentation. I know I sent it to Legislative Committee, but this is the first step in the process because Rusty had shared earlier, because of legislative redistricting, you have incumbents moved into districts with other incumbents. You have a lot of political churn that's happening, and so we're kind of eager to see how this will play out. We're optimistic that the legislature will move quickly on the state school aid, as our advocacy is to have this done before July 1st. However, you might recall, last year, it went all the way up till the last week of September before we knew what our budget was for the school year. That fiscal year started on July 1st. School year had already been in session for almost six weeks before you, we knew what our budget was, which is completely unacceptable. But this is a great starting point. You will see some pushback. Republicans are saying that they want to see buying down more of the state retirement debt, the MIPSER funding, and that's a long-term investment. If you buy down a billion dollars worth of debt now, that's more money that will go, that's less per pupil funding that we've got to basically pay back the state for that state retirement system. So in the long run, that's also a smart strategic investment. It'll be a matter of how this gets lice and diced, but we're very optimistic. It's right within your legislative platform, your top priorities about equity and adequacy in funding, investment in talent retention and recruitment being those top priorities. Any questions?
We're moving on to the Superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to begin with some health updates. As you know, we have been almost nearly two years into this pandemic, and as the pandemic has ebbed and flowed, and we have received additional information related to how to best manage to ensure that we keep schools open and keep our students and staff safe, we wanted to provide an update. Ms. Kim Barron, who is our Director of Nursing, will provide some general information around our transmission rates in our county, as well as our district, and also vaccination rates. And then I will come back with some comments related to some recommendations that I have for consideration for the, related to masks. So I'm going to turn it over to Director Barron and Mr. Helmuth.
All right, I'm gonna, we've kind of agreed to tag-team a little bit, so I'm going to start very high level. You know, as we're nearing the end of February, we're also coming in on the two-year anniversary of when COVID first hit. And if there's one thing that has been true, this has been an ever-changing environment since the very beginning. We've now had multiple variants of COVID-19. We've seen the guidance shift significantly from on the front end to being pretty heavy on state and county-wide mandates. We're starting to see that shift, and that really particularly started on February 16th, when the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services announced that the state is officially considered a post-surge recovery stage. Shortly thereafter, just last week, Friday, Kent County Health Department Director, Administrator, Adam London, Dr. Adam London, came out and shared a pretty detailed advisory about kind of where the state of COVID is in our county. He shared information, and what I'm going to go through here is this is what was in the announcement. This is kind of a short abbreviated version, but we wanted to give you a synopsis so you kind of see how it ultimately leads to the data and our consideration, because part of that advisory is from the state and the county, is that we should connect with our Kent County Health Department, seek advisement, review the data with them, and then use that to make local decisions. So over the past seven weeks, according to Dr. London, the Omicron variant of COVID-19 has diminished significantly since its surge and peak in mid-January. In mid-January, Kent County was averaging 1,200 cases per day with a positivity rate of nearly 40%. Today, Kent County is averaging around 158 cases, and I think this is coming from last week. I know that Kim's going to have some updated numbers. And the positivity rate was around 15% and dropping quickly. These are Dr. London's words. The inpatient numbers dropped from 400 to less than 200. In response to what the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services put out on February 16th, the Kent County Health Department, in response, was announcing the following last week, Friday. COVID is an illness that is likely to be with us indefinitely, and they will continue to share and to share information and resources useful for preventing illness and protecting health. Public health order of January 11th requiring isolation of positive individuals in quarantine, this was a mandate, for household contacts expired on February 18th. That was last Friday. Kent County Health Department is deferring to the CDC and the Michigan Department of Health and Human Service guidance for COVID mitigation measures in schools. And in a post-recovery stage, it's appropriate for education settings to weigh these considerations and make decisions that best fit the individual unique circumstances of each school and school district. In short, we're empowered to make our own decisions. There will not be any additional mandates. They are fundamentally treating this now like a normal, like any other communicable disease, with the exception of HIV and AIDS. Dr. London made it real clear, they will not be issuing vaccine mandates. Vaccines are strongly recommended for all eligible individuals. State, federal requirements that are currently in place for communicable diseases, and Kim will talk more about that, but that is, we are now kind of shifting into this, this new phase where we will go back to the state public health code to advise and kind of direct our efforts. School officials who suspect that a student has a communicable disease may be excluded for a period of time in accordance with the public health code. Again, Kim's going to refer to that. And then lastly, the January 19, or excuse me, January 29th Order of 2021 by the CDC still requires face masks on all transportation. So rapid transit, yellow bus transit, masks are mandatory. That is a CDC federal mandate that will still be in effect.
So, thanks for having me. So just to add a little bit more detail to what John was saying, so the Kent County Health Department lifted their last remaining public health order on the 18th, which was last Friday. So what that, what that requirement was, was, and it was, we were required to isolate positive individuals and quarantine household close contacts. So with the mask mandate, it was lifted on January 2nd, at the beginning of this, this year right now. And now we're moving into the recovery phase of the pandemic, like John said. And when I was talking with the Health Department, they pointed out several times that public health orders and mandates are put in place by public health officials to prevent the spread of disease during the highest risk phase of a pandemic, and that they're never intended to last indefinitely. So like John was saying, they're now saying that individuals should be making their own decisions about how to protect themselves if they are, someone who's at high risk has immunocompromised illness. So they are still recommending, though, that individuals who test positive for COVID-19 isolate for five days from the onset of symptoms. It's no longer required, but that is something that a public health, or I'm sorry, that as a communicable disease, that's still the recommended period of time that someone would isolate because they would still be considered contagious during the five days following the onset of symptoms. So, and that could be compared to something like strep throat when you are contagious for 48 hours, until, or until you've been on antibiotics for 48 hours, or with chicken pox when you would be asked to isolate if you had a fever and if the vesicles were oozing. And then once those two things are, are resolved, then you could re-enter the community. So it's similar to that. We have always been required to report communicable diseases weekly, per the Michigan Public Health Code that John referenced, and will continue to do that. And the Health Department is still saying that weekly we'll report collective COVID-19 cases that are reported to the school district. So that will be in addition to our regular reporting to the Health Department on Fridays. Some specific data that I think is helpful for you all to, to hear, I think John might have mentioned this, but I'll just reiterate, that at the end of January, the Health Department's data dashboard was telling us that the average, the seven-day average daily case count was around 1,200 in Kent County. Now, today, the, the data that John was giving you was from last Friday. Today, it's even lower than that. It's 140 for the seven-day average, which, you know, to get an average of 140, you have to have multiple days of less than 140 to bring that average down. So, so we've made a lot of progress in just three weeks. Another thing that they shared with me that on their, on the Kent, or yeah, on the Kent County dashboard, if you look at Wayne County's data, we have always been 10 days behind, around 10 days behind Wayne County. So Wayne County today has a positivity rate of 4.5%. We're at 12.9%. So we can assume, if, if the data holds true, as it has through the whole pandemic, that we'll be under five in 10 days. So that's really encouraging news. Are vaccination rates also available on the Kent County Health Department dashboard? But are the, so the way that they do this is they don't have specific, they don't have access to the students or staff that go to our school, but what they have access to is ZIP code data. So they can look at the ZIP codes that feed into our schools, and then look at the vaccine percentages for those individuals. So we're very closely aligned to the whole county. The ZIP codes that feed into our district, for five to 11-year-olds is 36% vaccinated, 12 to 17-year-olds is 49%, and 16 and older is 76%. So we're very closely aligned with the rest of the county. Another point for us to notice is that the seven-day average of the case counts throughout the month of January and into February, I just randomly selected some days to look at where Kent County was and where GRPS was. We have followed the same trend, so just randomly select a few days, like on, so last November, I mean, sorry, September 10, we had 21 cases reported, Kent County 195. Then in November, 14 cases for us and, and 602. So our numbers, well, this one wasn't so much aligned, but Kent County was climbing. They went up to over 1,200, and we also climbed to 50. But the good news is that last Friday, when the, when the county was averaging 140 on their seven-day average, we had only three cases reported district-wide. So, and there were days where we had, isolated days where we had 75 or more reported in a day.
I'm going to chime in just a minute. You know, the data dashboard that we developed based on the Kent County Health Department's color-coded guidance, if you kind of go back and you start with the, the mid-January, where we're at, on the, on the January 13th, we're at 37.7% county, or district positivity rate, or county positivity rate, with 1,159 cases per 100,000. It stayed that way for the next week, and then it started to drop, went down to 35% on the 27th, 1,100 cases. And then you really started to see a dip. February 3rd went down to 28% positivity rate and 635 cases per 100,000. So that was a 50% change from the week before. And then that trend continues. The following week, in February 10th, we're down to the 22.2% county positivity rate and 324 cases per 100,000. So again, you're at 635, down to 324. And then you fast-forward to last week, where we were at 15.4% and 169. So again, 324 down to 169. And then Kim referred that today's data shows we're at 12.9 positivity and 140 cases per 100,000. Very much aligned trend-wise across the state, locally, and aligned with everything that Kim said. So this is all up on our website on our COVID resources.
So then the last thing I'll just point out is, also on the Kent County Health Department's dashboard, you can pull up the school district transmission rate and the vaccine rates for the school districts that are in Kent County. And what we used to see prior to the Omicron variant was that the vaccine, the rates of vaccine for the school population did, correlated with the transmission rate. So higher number of vaccine, lower transmission rate. And what we've seen now with Omicron is that that's not, those aren't affecting one another. So yeah, the people who are vaccinated are, are, you know, having less severe disease, but that doesn't, it's not affecting the transmission rate. So some schools that have a much lower vaccination rate also have a lower transmission rate. So just another data point to look at.
And so all of this information is, of course, we wanted to provide an update for board members and our broader community. As promised, as we had, you know, went into the school year wearing masks, we said that as our data changed, that we would continually review and make suggestions according to that data. Where we are now with the projections of continuing to have declining positivity rates and less severity with this pandemic, that we are making the recommendation, I am making the recommendation that we do allow people to choose to wear masks and, and kind of make it based around their family's needs and their own personal needs. It does not mean that we won't continue to look at our data as we move forward. If another variant or a more severe variant comes forward, we'll review that data at this time, but it is very much in alignment with the work that we have done thus far with the CDC, the Michigan Health Department, as well as our local Kent Colony Department. The question or the thing that we want to make sure that we are intentional about in this conversation is providing time, again, to allow families and, and students to pursue if they so desire vaccinations, because that is the variable that we hear has the most impact around less side effects, less
A severe disease.
severity of, of illness and disease. And so we are, you know, wanting to make sure that we do have a, a plan that we roll out to our families to say, as we are looking to make masking a more optional opportunity, that we don't just begin tomorrow, that we do provide a timeline for our students and our staffs and our families, so that they know that we would be looking at this in the next couple of days, and, and to make an announcement of when mask would become, would lessen our mandate around masking.
Strongly recommended, but not required.
Thank you. Strongly recommended, but not required. That was a long way to say just that. Questions or discussion?
Just curious on the, if I can jump in there. Curious on, on what is the overall vaccination rate for Kent County? And how does that compare to national, if you, in fact, you have those?
So the, the overall vaccination rate for Kent County is 65. That's on the dashboard, right? Yes, I didn't bring that actual number. Yeah. And then it's broken down by age range, but the overall number is 65.
And then, do you know offhand nationally? I think it was like, I've heard.
I don't know.
I don't have that right offhand either. I don't want to speculate.
Just curious. Thank you.
So your suggestion is that we start this immediately, or two weeks, or?
I would like to, again, I'm, I, we are tracking this almost hour by hour, and so my goal is to look at our data again on Thursday or Friday of this week to see. And so at the earliest, I would say next Monday, but I want to make sure that it is trending downward, because I think people need to, to be able to plan, but I don't want to just say as, as early as tomorrow, because that would lead to a lot of confusion at buildings and such.
So no permit, there's a likely discussion, but not a permanent decision, and then that will be announced when there is a
Yes. As
Permanent as
Yeah.
As
So there's no decision made yet. So we should be clear about that.
The decision, let me say, the decision that I am leaning towards is that we do release, to make it more of recommendation versus a mandate. I just don't have a date of when that will be. So thank you for that clarification. Yes.
Required tomorrow.
Masks, masks are required tomorrow.
And tonight.
And tonight.
And so, if I heard you correctly, those that are vaccinated and those that are not vaccinated can somewhat get equally infected with this COVID, correct?
Yeah, what we're learning about Omicron is that, yeah, it's not necessarily preventing people from contracting the virus, but it is definitely reducing hospitalization, definitely reducing risk of death. Symptoms are usually less severe and the duration is shorter. But, but yes, so they are, there are a lot of people who are vaccinated who are testing positive.
Yeah. And, and can be passed by either.
As far as we know, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's an, an important conversation that we need to raise and, and speak to our district about, as people are wrestling with mask, unmask, and, and facts about those things, so that there's not misunderstandings about you are, I'm not, whatever. But, but solid conversations around those, those issues as we look at, you know, our community, so.
I just have one point of clarification. Did, I understand that if a student is riding the yellow bus or public transportation, masks are still required because of federal regulations, correct?
So even if, if our recommendation is that will be strongly recommended, not required for, on school property, in school facilities, it's still federally mandated that all, all individuals, students and adults, wear masks on the rapid and on the yellow bus.
Other questions related to this topic?
I would, I would also say that, you know, we're, we're a community, and, and we care about each other. And I think that's, you know, I may choose or feel like I don't have to wear it, or I shouldn't wear it, it's my right, but I'm going to wear it because I care. And, and I think that that should be something that we should promote. You know, wear it because you care. Wear it because, hey, I, I may not feel like I have to, but I'm going to do it anyway, just, just to be safe or just to be, have others be safe to some extent.
I think that's a very valid point, Reverend Matthias, and I, and many of us have worn masks just for that very reason, because it's, it is a community effort, and, and this has been very challenging for everyone, and we're trying to do the very best to keep students and, and our schools open. And so I think that is a choice, and we're hoping that people will do that, but we also know that there's the other side in trying to provide some space for that as well. Other questions related to this topic? All right. Well, thank you both. Mr. Helmuth, you're just, you're kind of, you're on deck. And so our next part of our Superintendent's Report is the unveiling of the promotional video that we are doing. Many of the things that we are trying to do in our district and our community is to show how great GRPS is and the things that we have to offer. I think it's extremely important that we take assertive interest in showing our story and telling our story. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Helmuth to kind of tee us up.
Sure. Well, thank you for the opportunity. I, I wish I had more of my team here. I think the President's Day threw things off, but I do want to acknowledge Caitlin Kalif, who's our webmaster and multimedia designer. She's been a rock star talent addition to the Comms Department. Brett Atwood, who normally is sitting up there and was not able to join us, but Brett is, Be Heard Productions is who produced this for us. We have really been pushing him and his team to not only complete this district-wide promotional video, but we are now churning out upwards of two promotional videos per school per week with a goal of having a minimum of a 30-second to a two-minute promotional video per school. We're also hiring freelancers who are also out capturing stories, all of which is fully aligned with strategic theme number two within the strategic plan that said we need to do more and better telling our story. And so we really challenged Brett and his team to capture our schools, neighborhoods, themes, young, you know, elementary, high school, some of those unique exclusive programs like the JROTC, which we're the only district in all of West Michigan that, that provides for the JROTC in three different high schools. And so I'm just going to hit play and show it off here. So check it out and let us know.
GRPS is a great school. Any culture, anything you want to learn, there's a school for you in GRPS.
It doesn't matter what part of the world you're from. When you come here, we're all a big happy family.
So many friends that want to be your friends. You might have almost 100 of them.
We all work very hard to meet the needs of the whole student and their family.
As a student at GRPS schools, I feel valued and I feel heard.
GRPS has helped me follow my dreams and passions.
The Grand Rapids Public Schools is one of the largest districts in the west side of Michigan. We serve schools, families, and communities well. We're innovative, we're inclusive, and we promote equity, and that's why people want to come here, stay here, and let students go here.
The opportunities that are given within GRPS are massive. You can forge your path in any direction, in any field that you want to go into.
For instance, we do the JROTC again. I've never
I've never been to a school that has something like that.
GRPS has allowed me to expand my knowledge and not just here in school, but also in outside programs.
We learn about stuff that we're going to actually use in the real world.
When I do science, I get really engaged to it.
We're able to build long-lasting relationships and they're some of my closest friends I have. And I hope future generations will experience the same experience I had.
Just know that the coaches always helping them out to help them get better at the things that they love.
I'll go first here. We will win. Yeah!
When I tell parents about GRPS, I tell them GRPS rocks. Why does it rock? Because it is very diverse.
We also see diversity, not only in students, but also within the staff.
We have the best staff here at GRPS.
We are here to make them feel safe. They're going to know that they are going to learn here. I'm happy to be here.
It's definitely a good place for you because it's very open, it's very diverse.
I enjoy working with the kids and watching them grow and learn. I love being a part of their learning process and being a part of a community and family.
I want students to realize their potential, both in and out of the classroom. And I choke up all the time because I tell my students I want them to love their job as much as I do.
You had a better chance and a better place to be successful because you're doing what you like, what you love. It's going to allow families to be changed, lives to be changed. That's what makes us so great as a school district. This is why GRPS is my choice.
GRPS is my choice.
GRPS is my choice.
GRPS is my choice.
GRPS es mi decisió.
GRPS is my choice.
GRPS is my choice.
This is the long version. This will be sliced and diced into 30-second ads, 60-second ads, all of which is already starting to, you'll start seeing clips of it on the radio, on social media, YouTube, all of the above. So Javier Cervantes, I want to give him a shout out. He and Brett spent a lot of time in the schools getting all of these individuals lined up. And so while you saw kind of the full-length version, you'll also see shortened versions throughout the rest of the year.
Will this be on regular television as well, you know?
We currently do not have network television ads purchased, but we typically do that closer to the start of the school year. So cable television, absolutely. Streaming, absolutely. Network TV, TV-813, not yet, but that could be part of the next school year advertising budget.
Good. It's wonderful, John.
Excellent.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you. And it is excellent. It's always nice to hear from the people who are most impacted, our students, and I love that it's their perspective and their experiences. So kudos to them. Mr. Helmhold is just, this is just, you're shortening. So I know that Ms. Stephanie Adams is here, who is the president and CEO of GRPSF. And there's a GRPSF update report, and then we'll move right into strategic planning.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for having me. Can you hear me okay? Okay. So I just want to talk about a few things that we have going on. And first and foremost, one, I'm really excited to see this video because one of the things that we've been taking on is a key strategy of the foundation is really to lift the branding up of the foundation so people know that we exist and why we exist. So we will be sharing this as well through all of our avenues. And hopefully you've been seeing our newsletters and things to really kind of highlight the work that we're trying to do and really uplift the school as a whole as well. So it kind of dovetails nicely into all the work that we're doing. One of the big pieces that we've been working on is the Building Champions Capital Campaign, and we really want to talk to you guys about that today as you'll be seeing in motion in March to approve the campaign as a whole. As you know, we have been working really hard at the Union High Schools for high school sports in regards to raising 1.5 million for capital improvements for the sports program, the high school sports program. And we are close to the end of that campaign with about, well, I say close, but 600,000 left to go. But we do feel that that's going to come in very well. In regards to that, obviously, we have two sports-related high schools in the district. So we have finalized a budget that we feel that is not only equitable, but also will make sure that safety is the utmost importance, as well as making sure that our students are supported with tutors and other academic needs to make sure that they can perform not only on their fields or pools, but respectively in the classrooms as well. So just want to kind of share that in terms of priorities. A lot of the stuff that goes into that is really about cultivating our alumnis for both high schools, adding additional campaign members to the Union High School program, but engaging volunteers at the Ottawa Hills High School level, too. That program, the Ottawa Hills Campaign, will come in a little bit higher. The needs are a little bit greater. As you know, equity is not always about equality. And so the needs are a little greater at the Ottawa Hills and the, and the overall campaign. So we have definitely looked at this for many, many months prior to me coming here. Then I looked at it from a different new perspective. So that campaign is going to come in around 2.2 million for that, so.
And I want to just piggyback on this, just to kind of bring it back. You may recall when Coach Fellows became the, the Union High Football Coach, he was very passionate and was ready to launch a campaign. And we had to make sure to harness that energy and make sure it's also being done equitably, not just for football within the Union. But we also said if we're going to do this for Union, we need to do it for Ottawa. And so we spent the better part of six months with Mr. Johnson, Marcus Harris, and others going through to really identify what were the needs, working with the coaches from the swim coach, volleyball, to football, basketball, all the above. And we had kind of a, you know, highest tier, like the highest wish list to the mid-level. And so as we've gone through, we finally landed on what we believe is a fair, equitable approach. This is going to go before Finance Committee for formal approval, and our intent is for this to come back to you at your meeting, first meeting in March for your final approval.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry, I can always wait for questions, but I'll wait until the end. The final thing I just want to kind of share is that we have just hired a Development Director for our organization as well. So there's, we're now a team of three. So, but working hard, obviously, for all of the scholars at GRPS as well as the staff. So I'm very excited to be here in my three-month timeline. So we are moving from kind of the listening session to active, very active work and really processes and procedures are, are high and focused on, on our work, so.
I have one question. I know you and I talked about this, and I know that the foundation used to be housed at the library, and you told me where you are now and thinking of moving someplace else. So where are you now?
Oh, we are still currently at the old Sigsby.
Oh, Sigsby, okay.
Sigsby, but we are actually going to be moving to 125 Ottawa.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
The campaign for Ottawa is set to begin when exactly?
So we are looking to kick off, we've already had our first capital campaign meeting, but we're finalizing the budget and wanted to wait until that would be final with you, you all. So I would say late spring is when we'll start to go out and actively solicit donations.
And then we are almost at our target with regards to Union.
Yes. Our hope is to have that finished by fall.
Well, hearing none, I just would, it's been great partnering with Stephanie. I mean, just, we're having a lot of fun. She's really diving in deep and learning all the different dynamics, including GRPS, and just we're grateful for all of what you're doing. And so
Yes, thank you.
A lot of good energy and excitement with the foundation right now.
It's easy to do with a great school system, so thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you. And the final part of our superintendent's report is just a very brief strategic planning update.
Well, and the good news is that we are now into the initiative action planning phase. We have 16 initiative teams comprised of individual sponsors, which are at the executive cabinet or the cabinet level, and then their owners who have been identified, some of whom are cabinet, but are many of the former strategic theme team leaders. You might remember, we had the six strategic theme teams. A lot of those individuals said, hey, we want to stay, these are our babies. We want to, we want to hold on to this. And then we have worked with our community partners who've recommended individuals to serve on the different teams. We're also working with our community partners to kind of develop recommendations for the strategic theme implementation and community engagement advisory team, which we affectionately call the Spice Team because we love acronyms in education. And from there, that would be the group that would kind of work with implementation, with ongoing committee engagement. The goal of the initiative action planning teams is to have their plans developed, ready by March 25th. And from there, our goal would be to take it back to executive cabinet, eventually do a presentation to the board. And then we'll be very much getting close to the end of this work with Greenway Strategy Group, and then we take it to the next level.
And the next level is implementation?
Next level is implementation, starting with those 16 initiatives in, in year one, which would be next school year, the 2022, 2023 school year. We acknowledge, there are, of those 16 initiatives, not all of them are going to be completed in year one. This is a three-to-five-year plan. That's part of the process of the initiative action planning is also looking at what's a realistic timeline, what are realistic resources that may be needed. And obviously, we're doing this in the middle of a staffing crisis. So we're working intentionally to engage our, our teachers, school leaders, support staff on the ground, knowing that they're also in triage mode. So it's, there will be intentionality about how we engage those voices moving forward.
Thanks for Mr. Helmhold. All right. That concludes superintendent's report.
All righty. And we have one action item tonight regarding SME Educational Foundation Prime, a grant for Innovation Central High School, so.
If I can invite Dr. Shelley Woodley, Woolley, excuse me, Director of Education Programs, Mr. Rodney Lewis, Executive Director of Secondary Programs, and Principal Dr. Jason McGee from Innovation Central to kind of give an overview of what the program is so that you have an understanding. We wrote just briefly about it on Friday, so we wanted to make sure that you had a full understanding of what this means. It's very exciting for Innovation Central and our STEM, STEM programs.
So good evening, Dr. Robey, Vice President Williams, and distinguished board members. We're here to talk about outstanding opportunity that we have at Innovation Central moving forward. We want to bring that, this grant to, to the board. So recently, we received a notification for the, from the SEM Educational Foundation that Innovation Central has received a grant from SME Prime Programs Grant. The award of the grant is awarded $300,000, which unbeknownst to us, we found that out as of recently. The grant was submitted by Ms. Gaim, which is here with us today, teacher at Innovation Central that leads and directs the program of the Academy of STEM. We also have, to my left is the Principal, Dr. McGee, which is in very much support of this process. Innovation Central was one of 16 applicants to be awarded this prestigious grant. The grant was written to support the Academy of STEM. There were 40 applicants in total of this grant. We are extremely grateful for the opportunity to receive an award of this magnitude, given the board's support and approval. It was, will allow the Academy of STEM to grow their capacity and equipment and instructional resources. It will provide our scholars high-leverage skillsets to compete in the manufacturing and engineering industry. Tonight, we have with us to explain in detail logistical timelines of the grant, Ms. Shelley Woodley, the Director of Educational Programs, and Mr. Art Mazano, the Educational Programs' Manager, both of which represent SEM Education Foundation. After they do their five-to-seven-minute presentation, we are going to have, open it up to questions if you have any questions. But I would like to ask Ms. Gaim or Dr. McGee if they want to add anything to the, the presentation this evening.
I can go first?
Yeah, I'll be real brief. I just, as Principal of Innovation Central High School, the innovation is in the title of our school. And when you have an SME Prime Grant that we're embarking upon, you know, it just, for me, it says more opportunities. And I do believe in education right now that we, there's an opportunity gap in a lot of ways. And be able to, being able to receive this grant and implement this grant, it just takes us one step closer in closing that opportunity gap for our students, our families, and our communities. So I'm ever grateful and I'm excited about what's to come for our Academy of STEM and Innovation Central as a whole.
Good evening. I, I applied for the grant, our advisory board, someone suggested that I apply for the grant, and did not realize how large it would be or, or what we're going to do, but it's going to bring a lot of opportunities. The community likes to work with the Academy of STEM and a lot of the students at Innovation Central to bring opportunities, to get these students, as they develop their careers, into these, these manufacturing jobs. And training them and introducing them in the stuff that's, that's out there is going to be really important. And, and so it's, it's a challenge for me. I'm a life science person, not a mechanical engineer person, but we, we bring these opportunities in front of the students, and some of them will really be able to take off. And I'm glad to, to do it and see this come forward. So thanks for the opportunity to talk to you guys and review the grant. Yeah.
So real quick, prior to the presentation, I would like to acknowledge and thank Mr. Helmhold, which helped, helped us pull this together as of last Thursday. It was fast in motion, and so I appreciate you guys putting on the board agenda tonight so that we can share that with you. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Woodley so she can provide a short presentation.
Well, thank you very much. I just want to make sure that you can hear me okay.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Vice President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Robey, Mr. Lewis, Mr. McGee, Ms. Gaim, congratulations and thank you for allowing Art and I to join you here tonight from all the way across the state. We thought we were going to be making a very quick run to the western side, and turned out we could do this virtually, and we appreciate that. On a personal note, I would like to thank the board members also for their service. I have served myself on two boards. I was president of one, clerk of another. And I know how many hours and hours of service go unreported in support of youth. And so on a personal note, thank you for that. And, and that really is why we're joining you here today, the support of youth. My colleague, Mr. Mazano and I bring many congratulations. As you indicated, you were one of 16 schools selected for the SME Prime Program. This does bring resources valued at over $300,000 to the school to help support manufacturing and engineering-related programming, helping the students expand their opportunities for the future. So with that, I'll go ahead and ask my colleague, Art, to take over with our PowerPoint. We don't have too many slides. I'd like to make sure that we're covering everything that we need to cover, and then we'll close out and allow for some questions, if you don't mind. So SME is the Society of Manufacturing Engineers, and we're really lucky because our headquarters is in Southfield, so Michigan gets a little bit of extra attention. Just don't tell my boss that. I am here with the Education Foundation, Art's here with the Education Foundation. We're a mighty team of 10, five of whom support Prime Programs. We like to say at the foundation that we are here inspiring, preparing, and supporting the next generation of manufacturing and engineering talent. And Art, why don't you go ahead and advance the slide? My internet's a little wobbly, so I've asked Art to handle the PowerPoint in the event I lose connectivity, and then he'll take over. So there's key words, inspire, prepare, and support. Over there on the left-hand side, you see inspire, SME, host conferences and conventions all over the country. And not too long ago, recognized that we've got secondary students right there in the neighborhood of all these conferences. So we put together one-day events where neighboring students come in, engage in an activity So we put together one-day events where neighboring students come in, engage in an activity. Here, they're working together on building a drone, and then they, they get to walk the conference floor and meet with manufacturers, keeping their knowledge of their futures current. And then on the far right-hand side, you see that word, support. And that is perhaps one of the things that SME is best known for, is their scholarship program. We just closed down our scholarship applications on the 1st of February, and they reported this morning that we had received 1,200 scholarships. We trained up 200 reviewers. Last year, we gave away somewhere in the neighborhood of 400 scholarships valued between 100 and 40, or $1,000 and $40,000. So it's really nice to work for an organization that not only talks the talk, but they walk the walk. And right dead center is Prime, the sweet spot. That is what we are here to talk about. This is a Prime Program here. It's actually, these photographs are taken from a program in Saginaw that we got started, and it features some of the equipment that you can expect to be rolling out to Innovation Central High School. So why don't you go ahead and roll forward, Art? And I'm going to try and keep this brief to allow for enough time for questions. So Prime, as I mentioned, you will be one of 16 schools recently chosen as part of this rollout. You're joining 17 already in the state of Michigan, so that'll make 33 schools in the state of Michigan. We're in 22 states, we've got 81 schools overall, and you can see in the map, all those states that are in blue are states where we have got Prime Programs. We awarded over $2 million in resources in 2020, served 6,000 students. One of the hallmark characteristics of Prime is that it brings a program to the school that is research-based and informed by the needs, the workforce needs of local manufacturers. It is not enough to simply bring some equipment to a classroom, and you're going to see that in the next couple of slides, that the program itself is more of a 360-degree program. It's very robust and holistic in nature, really trying to help guide students into their futures and allow them to select manufacturing and engineering if that's what is a good fit for them. So you can go ahead and advance that, Art. Tidying down a little bit into the nitty-gritty here, Prime supports seven pathways of instruction. When I first got started with the Foundation about two and a half years ago, I had come out of higher education, I'm a retired dean. My colleague Ron Scazari, also a retired dean. We were tasked with creating a program that really spoke more to how do we help a school establish a robust program than simply building or purchasing equipment? And what we quickly identified was that there were three pathways that we were seeing rolling out to every one of our schools, additive manufacturing, metrology and quality, and CAD/CAM. And we were seeing this because they were foundational to the following four pathways, industrial maintenance, machining and fabrication, mechatronics and robotics, and welding. So with that in mind, we just went ahead and named them as the core pathways. So we know that every single one of the 16 schools that are rolling out as part of this package is going to be receiving instructional support for additive manufacturing, metrology and quality, and CAD/CAM. Equipment, professional development, instructional resources, and a curriculum plan that speaks to industry-recognized certifications. Then based on research, much of it has, which has already been commissioned into regional workforce needs, and then we will drill down further and do a workforce needs assessment with members of the Michigan Manufacturing Association that are right in the neighborhood around Innovation Central High School. Based on their feedback, we will understand that the fourth pathway for Innovation Central should either be industrial maintenance, machining and fabrication, mechatronics and robotics, or welding. Now, I like to say this is a conversation, it's a research-informed conversation biased to local manufacturer employment needs. So as these pathways are selected, are identified, be aware that we will be in conversation with Mr. McGee and Ms. Gaim to make sure that it's a good fit. Okay, Art, why don't you roll forward? All right, so deliverables. Now we're really getting kind of granular. So I've mentioned this curriculum plan. The curriculum plan is built upon the research that I've already mentioned into regional workforce needs. It dials up to industry-recognized certifications. Our curriculum plan will call out state standards and federal SIP codes that it aligns to. It doesn't attempt to replace them, but it calls it, calls them out to assist with our curriculum and instruction folks as they tease through the curriculum plan. It also dials up to third-party certifications, those industry-recognized certifications that I mentioned. When the curriculum plan arrives, we understand from that curriculum plan what equipment needs to be purchased. We work with the school, and we will purchase that equipment, but we work with the school to make sure we're not replicating anything that's already on the ground. And then we'll also provide the professional development that's needed for instructors to feel comfortable on that equipment. So you've got this research-based program coming in, nuanced to local need, bringing with it curriculum supports, equipment, materials and supplies, and professional development. All of that is wonderful, but it won't do anything if we don't get students engaged, right? Student engagement's the magic sauce. So we do include a budget allocation for student engagement. Some schools drop that straight into our first robotics program, after-school program. Some will use it to support field trips to local manufacturers, perhaps a summer camp, something that brings this educational experience to life and makes it relevant for the students, makes it current. I've talked a little bit about our scholarships already. Another hallmark feature of our program is that we include funding for program sustainability. So we're going to come in, we're going to work with the school for about two years, step back, and what we don't want to see is that the school doesn't have the funds for the supplies they need, or the educational support resources that we've provided. So that, we've got some funding built in to support that as well. It is a four-year plan mapped out over four years. It includes 180 hours of instruction per year. We lean heavily on project-based learning. What is important for you to understand is that this is not a collection of lesson plans. This is information and resources for teachers. We absolutely believe that the classroom teacher is the architect of the educational experience. And so we provide that support, those resources, and then allow the teacher to weave together that program that they're going to roll out with their students. Why don't you advance that, Art? Oh, so my boss, the Vice President of the Foundation, is an excellent public speaker. And this is a slide, this is an homage to him because he likes to say, hey, we're prime, we know what we do, we do it well, and the results show. So I'll say it, we're prime, we know what we do, and the results show. Last year's exiting seniors told us that if they participated in a prime program, 89% of them were going into manufacturing. And there on the bottom, you can see that breakdown, 14% were going into the workforce, 60% to a trade school, 28% to a two-year community college, and 42% to a four-year program. Now, I call out those top three, the trade school, the two-year, and the four-year program, because all of them can benefit from those prime scholarships that we talked about earlier. Why don't you roll forward, Art? And a little bit about the process. Typically, we identify a high school. Typically, these programs are funded by manufacturers in your community. In this case, they are funded through a very large state appropriation, a $6 million state appropriation that we were able to use to fund 16 programs. We identify the pathways. I've talked a little bit about that. We know the three core pathways, and we understand that the fourth one is research-based in reliance with members of the Michigan Manufacturers Association. We use that information to develop a curriculum plan, and then in this case, we're going to have implementation over two years, bringing the resources that your program needs into the classroom and available to your students by the end of two years. You can go ahead and roll forward, Art. So a couple of key takeaways. The school bears absolutely no cost. You cannot believe how many schools I spoke to who said, really, really, there's no cost? Really, we don't have matching funds? Nope. The school bears absolutely no cost. The administration is handled completely by SME. That should make the business office folks happy. There'll be no grant reports, no budgets to worry about, we will handle all of that. It includes one-on-one consultation with our team of five education program managers. Art, I didn't get a chance to introduce Art, but Art comes to you recently retired as a CTE instructor in all areas. We got him one week after his retirement. We have several educators on our team. So we have this, this rich group of people here to help teachers as they implement the program. We've talked a little bit about the customization, the alignment with state standards, federal SIP codes, and third-party certifications. You know, as educators, we like to say that, that we are particularly tuned in to hearts and minds, and I have a business degree, so I remember my business instructor talking about widgets. Well, what's the common ground between hearts and minds and widgets? In this case, it's industry-recognized certifications. So that's what we dial up to, that's our common denominator. Another thing that I can mention is SME is a trade association, and we have got members all over the country, and members internationally. Typically, trade associations involve membership fees. In the case of secondary students and all secondary educators, SME provides membership for free. So we do encourage both students and teachers to become members in order to stay current with what's going on in the world, in their world. Why don't you go ahead and move forward? And with that, I'll leave you, because I really wanted to be brief so that there was time for questions. I'll leave you with what we were able to glean out of the application that we received from Ms. Gaim at Innovation Central High School. This is what we understand, and what we are really happy to be working with the school to build out over the next couple of years. So with that, I'll pause and open up, entertain any questions that you may have.
I think it's an exciting program and opportunity, and congratulations. I have one question, you know, I love the program concept. One of the things, though, that I question is, is there a role for increased internships or in our?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Excellent question. Listen, I can talk about Prime for an hour or two hours. My background is education. Educators like to talk. So, so I didn't mention that, but yeah, in the 12th grade, like I said, we really lean on project-based learning. And then the 12th grade of the curriculum plan, it does call out a request for capstone experiences as the school is able to craft them, whether that's a job shadow, whether that is a pre-apprenticeship, whether that, you know, as the instructor and the school is able to craft that, we recognize the need for that real-life experience for the senior student. And it helps your area manufacturers get to know your students. This is the opportunity for students to, to engage with possible job opportunities for the summer and on from there. So yes, long answer to your very short question, absolutely.
Thank you. I like the program more.
Shelley, can I add one thing to that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just want to apologize to Elizabeth. We, you sent me a list of all your industry relationships, and for some reason, they got lost in translation, but there, to piggyback off what Shelley just said, is there's a whole list of about 10 organizations in your area already, ready to participate in this. So that's exciting for, opportunity for those students to get those capstone and work-based learning type experiences. So I do apologize for those people not being listed on there, and we are going to grow that into industry relationship. That's what we're going to do at SME Prime. We're going to make contacts with more and more industry people to give more kids more opportunities. So thank you.
Yeah. MMA, the Michigan Manufacturers Association, has come in behind this entire program, and they are very excited to link their members with your school.
Thank you so much for taking the initiative to apply for this, and for the staff and administration for supporting the process. This is an awesome opportunity for our students.
Any other questions? We're all set?
Thank you.
All right, thanks very much. Nice to hear you.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations again, folks.
Thank you, Shelley.
This is a huge win. Thank you.
So board member, since this is an action item, we do need a motion in order to accept this grant.
Motion to approve the SME Education Foundation Prime Grant for Innovation Central High School.
Support.
Support. All right, Ms. Grant, yes? Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki is excused, President Ross is excused, Vice President Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next order of business is the consent agenda grouping. May I have a motion for that?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Support.
Ms. Grant, yes? Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki is excused, President Ross is excused, Vice President Williams?
Yes.
And discussion item for Board President, we received an email with regards to the spring retreat. If you have not replied to that, if you would please reply to that so we can secure date. And that is all for announcements. Any public comment with regards to non-agenda items? Seeing none, moving on to the superintendent's comments.
Again, thank you to the Innovation Central team. This is exciting, and just shamelessly, you are helping us get started with one of our objectives, to enhance outcomes for our scholars. So thank you for leading the charge. We are super excited to see the results of that, and those are my only announcements.
Board member comments, we'll start with Dr. Baker.
Just really excited about this. I've spent a lot of time at Innovation Central, and it's really, happy to see, see this move on, and it seems like it's going to really boost the life of the place, and just appreciate our public comment earlier, and gives us something to think about.
Ms. Davis?
No comment.
Matt tonight? Dr. Flores?
Yeah, I'm really excited about this program, especially the, the answer to my question about internships in, in our, in our private sector. Years ago, when working with the Hispanic Center and developing that agency, I made a contact in Washington DC and was able to recruit a program called 70,001 LTD, in which we, we made a similar program of job exploration, pre-employment skills, field trips to the printing and publishing industry. We were able to recruit the Grand Rapids Press as one of our major sponsors, and we set up internships like that. But believe me, it made such an impact in, in getting our kids from the neighborhood into real-life experiences with, with the private sector, and that, I think, is the key. So I'm really pleased with that aspect of it, and just to share that note with you. Thank you.
Awesome. Ms. Grant?
No comment.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes, I do have a comment. I, I've been thinking about how everybody on this board has at one time or another in the last two years made comments about our teachers and our staff and how hard they've had to work. And I think there are some people who really deserve an extra shout-out. And tonight, I was thinking about Kim Baron and all the work that she's done with the COVID and all of those wonderful things. I know that Kurt Johnson has worked really hard so that her kids could participate in athletics under some really difficult circumstances. And I know that Mr. Johnson is also very concerned about the kids' safety and so on. And I also want to thank the Foundation and the data, people who put all of this stuff together, our data dashboard, because that could not have been easy. And I just think that when I was listening to this presentation tonight about the library and all about Central, I just think we have to also reach out to and say thank you to Dr. Gorman, who I know when this whole thing happened, this whole idea of curriculum and how we were going to do curriculum was just dropped in his lap. this whole idea of curriculum and how we were going to do curriculum was just dropped in his lap, and he has done a marvelous job. And I also want to thank John Helmolt because I, if I don't hear from him at least once a week, I think he's ignoring me, you know? And if I don't get an email or a text from him once a day, I think he's ignoring me. So, I mean, he has been so on top of everything, you know, that we have tried to do and tried to get the, you know, the message out to our community. And sometimes it falls short, but it's certainly not John's fault, and it's certainly not a lack of trying on the part of any of us or any of the people that work with us. And so I just have a special thank you for these people and the people who serve on the cabinet with Dr. Roby. And obviously, I thank Dr. Roby for saying yes when, hey, come on to work for us, you know? We're going to have a global pandemic, and this is going to be lots of fun. So thank you to all of these wonderful people that we've had really the pleasure to work with. And now that we might be getting back to normal and I'll be able to see my friends' faces for the first time in two years, I'm just so grateful about the way things have transpired for us and for our students and our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, and Reverend Mathias?
Wow, what an evening. I really appreciate Kim and John, the updates. I hope to see you guys in front of the board more often, just really reassuring our district in terms of the pandemic and where things are landing because I think that we need to exude trust in our district, and I appreciate that. About three years ago, I did get to go to Central Innovation and just, I met a lot of the students in the STEM, and it was really exciting because I heard, I want to be a doctor, I want to, and they were already going into these places and really looking at what their future was like. And it was exciting to see the look in their face to realize that I can actually get there and that our schools were actually the feeding ground for that, of nurturing that. So I really appreciate that. And you said it yourself, I'm not an engineer, but I'm going to give this my best. And that is, I mean, that's an example of, I think, our district that we just jump in and we really put our hands to the plow and say, hey, we need this. I do appreciate Mary and just how you come up here to the board and you challenge us to look at our teachers. And I really appreciate that. And then to the foundation that we're really looking, not just at the scholastics, but really looking at taking advantage of alumnis. There's a lot of us out there, not me, because I came from Chicago, but a lot of alumnis that really are committed to our schools and want to give back in a big way. And so we hope that that really happens. And just, you know, the work of my colleagues, and we hear from a lot of our parents and certainly our teachers as well, and just trying to feel that and create a balance. And so I appreciate that labor as well. Thank you.
And I do not have a comment.